Mayor Gaffino, Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Trustee Curtis, Trustee Gately.
Here.
Trustee Lowery.
Here.
Trustee Nedjved.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
Thank you. Audience comments?
First comments?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is a good time or not, but I had a, I called Mayor Gaffino last week. I had a few residents call in about, um, I don't know if anybody's noticed yet, the new sign for VerLife over at their dispensary, the new one. I couldn't remember if we had any type of, um, like parameters that we put on it or not when they were here presenting, or if we even were able to do that, but, um, I seem to have remembered saying, you know, him, him presenting and being like, hey, we want to be real discreet with our signs and stuff and nothing crazy over there, but they finally put up their signs and it's the same logo, you know, the Vera Life, just like it is over on 31, except under Vera Life, big white letters, it says cannabis store, right? And it's posted like three or four times around the building. It, it's nothing major, but you know, I called Mayor Gaffino and he kind of was like, yeah, I kind of thought it looks a little tacky. Um, so I went back because I thought I could have sworn when, when, I think his name is Jeremy with Fairlife was here. Um, he, I thought he presented something about the sign and you know, some, some of the other villages that they're in, they're in Schaumburg and they're in, I think Rosemont. I think it was Schaumburg, he said, you know, they had a problem with his little, it's not even a, like a marijuana leaf on their logo there. It's just a little leaf. And they even Schaumburg, the board was like, yeah, we don't even like that leaf. And he made it a point when he was here that you don't like it, we'll remove it. And they did. So their logo has a leaf in it. And in the Schaumburg location, they removed the leaf for the, for the village. They felt, hey, if you don't like it, we'll get rid of it. So, you know, and the other thing I, you know, I went and looked at the, I think it's the Rosemont location is another one he had presented here. And if you go to the, the slideshow and stuff he presented, there was, you know, same thing. It was just fair life, fair life. And I think on route 31, it says dispensary under Vera Life. Um, but I just wanted to bring it up and I don't know if there's anything we can necessarily do about it other than, you know, I don't know if we can just maybe have a conversation with them and say, hey, it's, it's something that, you know, it was a hot topic back then, having the dispensary there. Um, you know, maybe to make some of our residents a little, you know, please on a little bit more, hey, you know, maybe would you consider removing that, you know, I don't know if that's something we can do or.
I had Steve look into it.
Not, not make him do it, but just have a good conversation with him. He seems like a nice guy.
I just wanted to find out for sure what do we even agreed to and now Steve, can you kind of throw us in on that?
Sure. So in our code right now, we actually have, um, for adult use cannabis, we have a section of rules. And in those rules, it basically adheres to the state of Illinois rules. So there's nothing in there about signage and our rules. Most of ours are basically like, you can't have more than two in a, in the town. You have to be certain amount of distance from schools, things like that. Uh, but then it does reference that it has to meet all state law and the state law does have a section on signage where they're not allowed to use marijuana, like plant or anything like that. Midry like that. We looked into that. We didn't see anything about using the word cannabis or dispensary. A lot of the newer places are using the word dispensary now. And there, whereas in the beginning, they weren't using any of that. It was just the name of the company. Uh, we went back into the minutes, tried to look at all the public comments and everything that came out during that time. And, and we were, I actually started looking at the, the presentation that Fairlife did. They, I remember in that presentation, they showed an image of what the building might look like. And in that it just shows fair life, but it doesn't have anything else on it. Um, but it doesn't say, there's nothing in the special use approval or the state law that precludes them from using the word cannabis. So there was nothing, no conditions were added on to it or anything like that. At the time they just said, we anticipate the building looking like this. It wasn't even in the renderings. We're looking at the renderings and the renderings didn't have a sign on the picture. It was just a drawing of a blank building. So at this time, you know, what we could do is as Tom, we'll go back and keep looking at the video. It was like a two hour presentation. We started going through some of that. We can always ask them if the board would like us to reach out to them. We can, uh, that's not a problem. Uh, just let us know what you're, you're thinking.
Yeah, I, I watched the video today and, and you know, he, he made it, he made it a point. It wasn't something we brought up, but he made it a point, the example was Schaumburg and it was, hey, they, the board really didn't like that. So we had no problem. We removed it and he, right after that said, we have that same sentiment here. So I think he might be open to it.
It's fair to ask the question at least.
Again, not to force it, just ask it, you know, I don't think it would hurt. Worst cases, he says no, and you know.
Anybody else?
I mean, I.
I don't know if you've been by it, but if you drive by there, I mean, it's like the first thing you see in our village and it's just.
Last time I went by the, the sign wasn't up, so I, I don't.
Yeah, they just put it up last week.
If I go to Woodman's, I approach east of it. I don't know that way, but, um, I think it doesn't hurt to ask. I'm, I'm dug in either way, but I guess I'd rather not say cannabis store, like if you're gonna choose.
I mean, I'd almost, I'd almost rather it have a.
I mean, I'm fine with asking, but I guess I would. Make a big issue out of it, I suppose. If they're willing to do it, then great.
It's also very bright and I thought everything in that area was supposed to kind of blend in. And this is like.
Bright white.
Neon white.
Yeah.
Huge letters. Yeah.
Mark? I don't care. Just don't want to like.
I don't, I'm not saying be nasty about it. Just ask them, hey, you mentioned this in your video that. This for another town, maybe.
Remember all along, I didn't, I was the first one, I think, to call Steve on that Monday when I saw it. I'm like, well, I don't remember that part of it. Cause the, we were always told it's going to say Vera Life. It could be this, that, or.
My recollection was in, from the renderings, I recall it just saying Vera Life and there was nothing else.
Like I said, I watched the video today and it did. He showed his Schaumburg one, Vera Life. He showed his Rosemont one. The street view at the time said just Vera Life. I went on there today. They updated the photo to like September of 22, and I think this meeting was August of 22. As of September, the photo says cannabis store now, but when he showed it to us, it didn't. So not a big deal, but it was, it was really quick where a few residents called me.
The one, um, the Rosemont picture was updated.
The Rosemont one was updated in September of 22.
Nathan and I were doing our research. We noticed the same thing. Like when they presented a couple of years ago, maybe that was their previous marketing and now they're.
Right. Exactly. So again, the way he said, you know, we had that same sentiment, we had good people, neighbors here. Just, I don't think it would hurt.
Sure. On their, their side, they're like, you don't know what it is, that you don't have a sale. So I'm sure that's going to be there.
It's, and again, we can't do anything, but I don't think it would hurt.
Doesn't work. Yeah. Give a call and see what.
We can absolutely call them and, and, um, they were getting ready to move in and, and what, a few weeks?
Yeah. So, so that building should be CO'd, um, within a week or two and, and they're, they want to make the move here soon. Uh, and we have a group waiting to want to move back, fill the old store. So that'll be coming through in April or May.
And it may not be as bad as you think, just to take that bottom part off, you know?
Or even if he changes it to dispensary, I think that better than just cannabis, big cannabis.
Did a nice job too. Uh, he met with the, the company that's looking to backfill their current location.
Yeah.
And he already looked at their logo and their, and based on just the recent comments and, and tonight's board meeting, obviously, um, we'll go forward and, and tell them, um, to try to, you know, present something that we think the board is going to be more in line with.
Yeah, I'm surprised how it slipped by us or that they didn't present actually what it's going to look like, you know? Like I said, I just, I think we all just assumed what we're seeing.
My guess is that looking back at those, those discussions we had at the board, my guess is that the state law had signage provisions and it sounded, it sounds great when you say, well, it doesn't going to, it's not going to have a pot leaf on it or anything like that. But then you don't get to thinking that the wording.
That the actual word is going to say it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Just a note, anytime that we, uh, want to regulate the content of a sign, we're always treading on thin ice with the first amendment. Um, I haven't done any research on this, but you know, it is the cannabis act. Um, so for them to advertise it as a cannabis store, I, I don't think we can make them take the sign down, but we could call them and say, we've had some residents object and pass that along. And, uh, and that's what we'll do. And we'll point out their examples in their other communities and see if what they're willing to do.
Thanks.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Under discussion, item one, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is a concept plan. It is for, uh, this is part of the North River Town Center area. So this is on Orchard Gateway. It is a housing, a senior housing concept plan that would go on the north side of Orchard Gateway directly behind, uh, basically the JCPenney area. Uh, it, it involves a large parcel there. Uh, this development would only be on a portion of that. Nathan's going to walk us through the details and once again, because it's a concept plan, all they, that we're looking for from the board tonight is feedback. And if the board thinks that this is an acceptable type of development, it would then go through the zoning process, uh, plan commission and whatnot, and then come back to the village board again for approvals.
Okay. So, uh, Clover Development, uh, is looking, uh, at a property in town center, as Steve said. So the town center was originally approved in 2006. Um, the land along the north side of Orchard Gateway here. Um, so this is north of, you know, there's Target, there's JCPenney, this is that land, the new Ram dealership is going right there. Um, this area, uh, north of Orchard Gateway was called Lot 16. The original town center PUD did have a residential component. It was supposed to be on Lot 20. Um, some years later, Lot 20 is over here where the warehouse ended up. So at some point later, the PUD was amended. Um, and you know, warehouses were approved over there. So there is not currently in the PUD, a spot for residential, but originally there was. Um, the current applicant Clover Development is proposing a four-story, um, apartment building on, uh, just the eastern portion. Um, so this portion here. Um, this would be for, uh, independent living senior project. Um, so they are proposing 5.4 acres, 124 units, uh, 95% of which would be two bedroom. Um, the building would be age restricted to 55 and over, but not assisted living. So it won't have, um, you know, medical facilities, a nurse on staff, communal dining. Each apartment would have their own kitchen, would be their own individual unit, just age restricted. So no kids. Um, 150 parking spaces are shown, including 40 and garage spaces. Um, the code for independent living facilities is one space per dwelling unit, uh, plus two for a thousand square feet of office area. Um, so they would meet that. Um, the plan does show cross access with the remaining parcel. As I said, the original town center had a residential component. So staff isn't opposed to adding back a residential component, um, especially, um, you know, town center could use some, some life and, uh, you know, bringing some residential in might start to get you some restaurants and other things that aren't there now. Um, the biggest concern staff had was with the remaining property. Um, you know, if that were to remain, uh, commercial, then you could end up having some use, you know, go right there, right next to the new residential that would end up not being compatible. Um, so we did talk to the property owner, um, to see about, could we make this section, you know, everything north of Orchard Gateway up to the entrance where Ram is, that be the residential section. Uh, the property owner was open to that. However, they didn't want to, um, they wanted it to be conditional upon Clover. And, and in a sec here, Clover is going to introduce their, you know, their company to you and have a few slides to show you. Um, the property owner was just concerned that if their deal doesn't go through, they don't want to zone the land and then have the deal not go through. And now they, they've down zoned it to residential. So you know, that's something we'll have to work out with the attorneys. Maybe we do it in the PUD. Um, we haven't quite figured out all the details of that, but staff's idea would be that this whole area to the north here would be the new residential area of town center, just to try to keep things from, you know, becoming a hodgepodge. Um, so with that, I will invite, uh, representative from Clover to come on up and tell you a little bit about their company.
Thank you. Russell Caplan for, uh, for Clover Development. So I wanted to start off with, uh, talking a little about who, uh, who Clover is. Uh, we've been in business for 35 years. We are an owner operator of these, uh, these communities. Uh, we have 47 of them, uh, in the, uh, you know, kind of the Midwest region. Um, we're long-term holders. You know, really my, my, uh, mandate as a developer, uh, with them is to create for the portfolio. We pride ourselves on, on holding these for a long period of time and owning them and operating them and creating communities. Um, we have some other stuff, but for the most part, this has been our focus for the last 15 years. Um, we've never, uh, these, uh, our, our niche is it's a market rate product. So it's not, you know, it's not affordable housing, you know, uh, tax credit type stuff. We've never used any HUD financing. We've never converted to on affordable. Uh, what we try to do is where if you have four or $5,000 a month to spend in retirement on your, uh, your apartment, you can live like a king. You're going to have, uh, you know, waitstaff, you know, meals prepared for you, waitstaff at every meal. You're going to have housekeeping and laundry services available to you. You know, but most, you know, a lot of people can't, you know, they can't afford that. That's not, it's not a reality. And then, you know, if all you have is social security, uh, the, uh, the senior lie tech product is, it's good product. It's nice and it's senior focused. But there's the, the largest group of retirees, 65 plus right now. They don't fit in either of those buckets. They need a place, they need a place to go. And right now, if they're going to go into apartments, they're looking for ground floor apartments in, uh, you know, all ages communities where they, they run different hours. There's no senior programming. A lot of cases, it's not a senior, uh, focused apartment at all. Um, and it really doesn't, uh, it doesn't cater to their, to their needs. And then we try to do that. Uh, we have, uh, uh, both the, uh, the, the hard programming for, uh, for seniors, including, uh, you know, wheelchair widths, uh, easy access, uh, restrooms and showers, uh, pole cords, the high counters and low cabinets, everything, you know, inside of the units. We also have a beauty salon on, uh, you know, on the property that there'll be a third party, uh, beauty salon operator in there. We have, you know, community spaces and gathering spaces, uh, soft programming. There'll be clubs and activities and parties and what have you for, uh, you know, people to, you know, be able to socialize and meet their neighbors. Um, every unit does have a, uh, have a kitchen. Uh, so they'll be able to, uh, you know, cook and prepare their own foods. Uh, you know, most of our residents come from, uh, about a three to five mile radius. So a lot of the people are already living in the community. They want to, you know, maintain their houses of worship, their doctors, their restaurants, their, their shopping, their, you know, their, their family and friends. So they're, they're able to do that. The other thing that it does is it helps get them out of housing that maybe they don't belong in anymore. Older housing that somebody else can move into, renovate and, you know, kind of continue to, uh, to grow the community and revitalize, uh, you know, neighborhoods and communities. Oh yeah. Um, we don't, we don't put a whole lot of cars out, especially during peak time. We don't put a lot of cars out on the road. Um, you know, probably our busiest time is between two and three in the afternoon and it might be 30, 40 cars. I think we say 32 is, uh, what our traffic studies have, have determined. Uh, you know, we pay, we pay full taxes and we don't put anybody in the schools. So we're, you know, essentially a net subsidizer of the, uh, the school district. Um, you know, like I mentioned, we don't have dining. Uh, we're not assisted or skilled or memory care. We don't have, uh, you know, any help, any healthcare. So as a result, uh, you know, these people are going into the community for, you know, for all these things, whether it's food or healthcare or other activities. Additionally, we don't have the employees, uh, you know, coming in. So we don't have a huge, uh, you know, influx of employees in the morning and going out at night, creating additional traffic. Um, you know, we're fair housing compliant and, uh, you know, we, uh, you know, all of our kind of, our, our biggest service would be trash and it's, uh, you know, during normal hours. Talked a little bit about the, the amenities, but it's a, and we can just skip to the, to the unit itself there. Here's a typical floor plan. Uh, most of our units are two bedrooms. We find that a lot of folks, even if, even if they're just themselves, they like having that extra space. They use it as a study. They use it as an office. Um, you know, we do have storage in the building that they can rent. Um, additionally, we have the garage is available, but everybody likes kind of having that, that extra bedroom, that little more space. Uh, inside the community, we have both the soft programming as well as the, uh, the hard program. There's trips, there's fitness center, uh, convenient mail service. Uh, the other thing that we do is, uh, the, the rent bill is your entire bill. So your water, your electricity, your telecommunications, all of that is in a single bill each month. Uh, so it takes away a lot of uncertainty. Uh, we found that, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of seniors prefer to write, you know, one check each month rather than three or four, and having the uncertainty and not having to worry about, you know, electric bill coming in crazy or anything like that. And here's just some, uh, some pictures of some of our communities. So here's our, our site plan. It is a four-story, uh, building. Um, and that's a, that is a sample elevation there. That's, you know, what we would propose, uh, you know, the appearance and materials be. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. What is typical rent for a two-bedroom these days?
We, you know, we, we'll, we'll be studying that further kind of as we go through it, but generally it ends up, um, in kind of the 1600 to 2000 a month.
Great idea. I think it's a perfect spot for it. We need to get some more people down into that area. The only thing that I would like to see is if there's some way we could, uh, take advantage of the wetlands. You know, maybe have a trail or something for bird watching or things along those lines.
Back in, back behind it and to the, to the side. Sure. Um, the, the wet ones are actually owned by a different property owner. So we'll have to look into that a little bit. Um, but I mean, it's, it's an, it could, could be an amenity.
Get to look out onto them. Um, yeah, I think it's a great idea. I, I mean, to me it will bring some vibrancy there. We'll bring some more people, maybe restaurants will come in. I think it's a really good place for it. Four stories, but there's not obstructing anyone's view to anything or from anything. Um, yeah, I'm very much in favor of it. I think it's a good place for it.
Yeah, I, I love it. Um, is, I, is there, as far as our village goes, is there something? Didn't we have an apartment that we didn't want to go up to four stories? Is there something village-wide that we, is three stories our limit or is this special or?
Um, I think this would probably be the first four stories. So the last time we talked about apartments at Randall Terrace, they were approved at three story and wanted to go taller. In that case, they were right next to.
Some homes. Okay.
Other uses. In this case, you're got JCPenney on the left side, wetlands on the other.
Yeah. I didn't know if it was like a, an ordinance or something we had that you can't go above it that we'd need a special, but.
They'll have to have elevators. The taller you go, the more code requirements, building code wise there are. Um, but it doesn't say you can't do it. It's just.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's great. Now what about like, that doesn't, I don't think relate to Clover necessarily, but how about, what about everything east of there up to Randall Road? I mean, is that something in the future we would be considering? To do the same thing with or what happens?
You know, that, that was staff's concern as you have this, this section right here, um, for the remaining property as you head east.
Right.
Um, so this parcel, um, is under contract by a union hall, um, which would be a pretty good use because it's kind of in between the industrial and, and, you know, residential, it's pretty much an office building. Um, farther east of that is the parcel we own. Um, so we have a lot of control over that. Um, and then there's one more retail parcel right on the corner of Randall.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I like this a lot.
Um, where's your nearest property like this?
Sorry?
Where your nearest property like this that you have developed?
Um.
Just curious.
We have, uh, stuff in, uh, Kansas City area. We've got stuff in, in Michigan.
So nothing.
Something else locally around here.
Oh. Not right now. Um, we have one that we're getting ready to come out of the ground, uh, up north.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think that whole piece needs to be, uh, you know, the piece to the west would really make sense having it similar to this. The other side, hate to, you know, count out re, uh, retail or commercial, you know, our piece and at a corner, but.
There is kind of a legal issue there. If, if we rezone one lot, um, that kind of smacks of spot zoning, which is not legal. So if there were two lots that were rezoned residential, um, that was more basis for doing that than there would be to rezone one lot.
Or maybe we do it all in the PUD and, and don't rezone anything. I, I don't know, but we have to, I have to get with the attorneys for all the parties.
Something that needs to be considered.
Yeah, I think it looks nice.
What, real, real quick, if, if this works out well, would you think of maybe taking out the other half of that lot too, or in the future?
If somehow it's still available, we're up and stabilized, we'd probably be happy to.
Okay.
I would assume that the market studies that you conducted indicate that this is what needed, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We, we look at, uh, we look very closely at the, um, the number of, uh, seniors in a three and five mile radius, cause that's where, where they'll be coming from as well as, uh, you know, we look at the housing values, income levels and, uh, you know, percentage of renter versus occupied. These are a number of the factors that get looked into, into the, uh, into the market study to determine that, you know, this is a place where our product would, uh, would do well.
Mike?
Well, I think it's a great idea. I, when I first saw it, I said, well, that's a perfect ideal use of that area. I think so. I'm all for it.
Would there be any kind of outdoor recreation that would go along with this or it's just?
We do have a court, there is a courtyard if you can go back up to the.
So one other question. So what if somebody is caring for their adult parents, but the kid and the child's under 55?
They don't, we can't have any residents under, under 50. That's a strict.
Yeah. Cause otherwise then you start affecting schools.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying some of that's 30 and their parents are 60 that they're caring for them, but that, that was the question.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to accommodate 30-year-old in the building.
Yes. Got it. All right. Any other questions?
No.
All right.
What about if you had your grandkids stay overnight? Would that be okay?
Technically no.
No, no, it, it, we, we actually wouldn't, you know, wouldn't allow that. Now, I, does it happen?
Uh, you lost, you lost one potential customer.
You know, and, and you know, what ends up happening is, you know, each of our communities really takes on a, uh, uh, a, a community and a culture of its own. And some of them would undoubtedly be a little bit more permissive to sleepovers than others.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Item two, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two tonight on the agenda is our budget overview for the 2024, 25 fiscal year. Uh, just reminder, our fiscal year starts June 1. We start a budget process, uh, usually early January with the department heads, uh, late December. Uh, we try to get everything wrapped up. So we, our first meeting in March is where we do an overview. So it's basically a quick presentation tonight, just giving you a high level look at everything that's, uh, kind of planned, uh, dollars and cents wise for expenditures and revenues. And then two weeks from now is when we look more closely at the departments individually. And then typically we come back again in, um, April with a placeholder where we don't necessarily have a presentation, but we leave a placeholder in case there's any questions. And then final approval is in May. Uh, with that, Jason is going to walk us through our, our current budget that we're planning for next year.
All right. Thank you. Um, so first we're just going to start with the staffing. Um, since personnel makes up probably the biggest part of the budget. Um, the one change we have in here right now is, uh, and the administration of finance department is taking the part-time IT assistant and moving him to full-time. Um, basically he would take over, um, GIS work in that plan. We do have one other, uh, work additional staffing change we're looking at within our water department on adding an additional employee there. We're not quite sure what level or what type of positions it is yet. So it's not, the, the, it's not worked into the budget yet, but well, that's just kind of on the radar for us. Maybe when we come back in two weeks, we'll have that figured out.
And real quick, it's important to note that the water fund employees are paid for by the water fund, not the general fund. That's what comes out of the water rates.
So in total, right now we're seeing just a, a point five or a half FTE increase, uh, in staffing levels. Um, some of the personnel assumptions we're working with, um, both the public works and the police sergeants contracts are up as of May, May 31st. So we don't have, uh, we don't know what the increases are going to be yet for those two. We'll, we'll know that later on. The police officer's contract calls for a four and a half, four and a quarter, uh, percent raise come June 1st. And then we factored a 3% uh, for non-union staff. Health insurance, we're seeing the HMO come in at 5.7% increase. PPO is actually decreasing 0.8%. So basically staying still. Um, HMO dental, no change. And then PPO is going up 4%. Our IMRF rate, so this is the pension for the non-public safety employees. Um, we are assuming a blended rate of 10.2% for the year. Uh, we know our current rate is 9.63 and we're, we're assuming next year's rate for 2025 will be around 11%. So between those two, we're kind of assuming 10.2%. Uh, the village does have two, um, Uh, the village does have two, um, debt certificates outstanding. One is, uh, the two thousand fourteen debt, which was used for the, the construct, the police department. And that's paid for by sales tax revenue, plus sales tax revenue. So every year we take money out of the general fund and move it over to pay for that debt. Uh, the current debt for that one due is six hundred and thirty-eight dollar, or six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred. And there's two point nine million dollars left on that one, and that goes through twenty twenty-nine. And then the twenty seventeen debt, um, is paid for by water user fees. So this was, uh, taken out um, for water infrastructure improvements. We have three point three million dollars left on that with a four hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollar payment due this next fiscal year. Some of the major revenues within the general fund and I just kind of highlight six revenues here. There's, there's forty-plus revenues that make up our general fund, but these six items right here account for eighty-five to ninety percent of, of all the money that comes into our general fund. Um, sales tax, we've actually seen come back a little bit. If you look at the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we're at seven point three million dollars. Um, this year we're kind of projecting it just to be a little over seven million dollars. So things with just the economy slowing down a little bit, maybe car sales coming down, coming back down to normal a little, a little bit is, is kind of pushing that downwards a little. Um, currently we're projecting just under seven million dollars for the next fiscal year. Um, I have one note on there that this does not include the grocery tax, uh, proposal that was in the state budget. We'll get into that in a second here. Um, income tax, we're still seeing strong at two point, over two point eight million dollars, and we expect that to carry into next year. Um, use tax, six hundred ninety-four thousand dollars is what our current, uh, budget for next year is, which is fairly similar to where we're at this year. Um, property tax obviously includes the two and a half percent C P I we put on, uh, for this year. Um, building permits is one that kind of varies every, from year to year, whether or not there's a big development project going on. So usually we kind of budget low on that one, three hundred fifty thousand for next year. And then if we get a, a, a major project comes through, then you'll see like this current year, we're projecting seven hundred and seven, sixty-seven thousand dollars. Last year, six hundred ninety-three thousand. So it really just depends on what's coming through. Um, if we have no projects coming through, no major projects coming through, we kind of settle in around that three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand each year. And then the franchise fees are, are going down each year as more people kind of cut the cord and get off of, uh, cable. So the grocery taxes, uh, elimination, the one percent grocery taxes in the state's proposed budget, um, as far as North Aurora is concerned, we're projecting anywhere from six hundred and sixty-nine thousand to seven hundred and sixty-five thousand of, of money lost in our general fund that would account for. Um, so we're really looking at the budget right now just to kind of see what we can do to account for if we lost seven hundred thousand dollars going into next year. Um, some of the things we were looking at would be the capital transfer that we usually budget from the general fund and the capital projects fund would most likely have to go away. Um, we'd look at some of the vehicle and equipment transfers we make. So our general fund contributes money to our vehicle and equipment fund every year to basically save for when we replace vehicles, uh, into the future and kind of save up money for that. So we might have to turn that down a little bit this next coming year. Um, we also look at possibly reallocating or possibly raising, uh, utility tax. So currently the gas tax and electricity tax are in our capital projects fund. Maybe we have to take a portion of that out of capital and, and move it over to the general fund to make up for some of the revenue. Um, and then maybe we look at some of the operational requests in this current budget and maybe have to pull some things back to kind of get us uh, under that seven hundred thousand dollar, uh, decrease in revenue.
I think it's important to note too that there are potential other revenue sources too, but Jason and I are looking to try to, what our options are without having to actually go in and, and, you know, put another tax together other than raising the, the utility tax possibly. Um, but we talked about mainly trying to stay with, in what we have to try to make up for that loss, uh, of revenue.
Just a couple of high-level items within our general fund. Um, we have three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars of sales tax rebates, um, budgeted. This currently made up of the, uh, the Ford, the Ford dealership, uh, the town center inline stores and the Genesis dealership. Uh, we see an increase this year of fifty thousand dollars. And that's mainly because the Genesis store will be open the full year versus this current budget year. We assume they'd open a half, halfway through the year. Um, our police pension contributions are going up two hundred thousand dollars to one point eight million dollars. Um, vehicle and equipment charges, I mentioned, we currently are budgeting five hundred and eighteen thousand to go over into the fund for future equipment purchases. Uh, the, the debt transfer I mentioned, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars coming out of the general fund, pledged sales tax revenue going into the, the, our police debt service fund, pay for that principal and interest. Um, and then the capital transfer, previously we have done six hundred thousand dollars each year to budget. Uh, but this year we had to lower that to four hundred thousand dollars, uh, just with the way revenue, we're projecting our revenues to come in. Some other funds on our capital projects fund, we have two point three million dollars, uh, projected for the twenty twenty-four road program. And we also have one million, three hundred sixty-five thousand for the, uh, public works facility, engineering, design and construction management. We don't have any costs related to the building in yet. Um, if we move forward with the building and the building gets approved, we'd likely bring back a budget amendment, which adds the cost and any potential debt related to, uh, funding the building. Um, but for the time being, we're just, we're not assuming any construction yet until that goes further along. Um, in our Route Thirty-One Tiff, we're projecting taking seven hundred thousand dollars out of that Tiff and moving it to the United Tiff. And then down below you see on the United Tiff side, of course, spotting seven hundred thousand dollars, which we plan on going out and trying to find various properties, uh, to buy within the Tiff. Related to the Tiff though, we're seeing a significant increase in property tax revenue. Um, this is mainly the Opus Valley Green project starting to come online and, and hitting the tax roll. We're seeing about a six hundred thousand dollar increase, uh, preliminary going into that. So we should hit a million dollars this year coming into the United Tiff, just, uh, related to primarily those buildings coming online. And then the, uh, airport Route Thirty-One intersection, we have budgeted for five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, but five hundred thousand dollars of that is funded by a D C O grant. So it should be very little out of the actual Tiff, uh, related to the costs that we're responsible for. In the water fund, we're assuming right now a twelve and a half percent rate increase. If you remember last year about this time, we presented a five-year plan of where, uh, we kind of phased a rate, a rate increase over those five years. This is year two of that five-year plan. Um, major capital projects in the water fund is a skater system upgrade. This was in the, this current year budget, but we haven't got to it yet. So we're carrying that money over to the, the following budget. Um, while six improvements, again, something that's budgeted this year, but we're still working on it. So it's going to get carried over to the following budget. Uh, we have various improvements to our east and west treatment plan of a hundred ninety-one thousand and a hundred and six thousand. Um, the Clearwater Lovedale Offit in Fox River Water Main, which we had, uh, approved earlier tonight. We're assuming a lot of that construction, some of that construction is going to get followed, carried over into the next year. So we're carrying over five hundred thousand of that project into the next budget year. And then we're also assuming a start of the central water tower construction. Uh, right now we're thinking around a seven million dollar project or so, but maybe next year we get a, we get to maybe about a million dollars of it actually starting in the construction.
Earlier tonight, when Brian mentioned, uh, Clearwater and, and Lovedale and Offit project, that's the first water main that we've lined or that we will. And it's, it's a complicated project because it goes under the river, but I give, uh, Brandon and Brian and the engineers a lot of credit because lining that and, and not doing excavation is a significantly uh, less expensive way to do it, but just as effective, basically adding decades of life potentially to that water main.
In the vehicle and equipment fund, uh, there are no major vehicle, new vehicle, uh, purchases budgeted for the, for this upcoming year. Um, we do have those four Dodger Angle Police Squad that we should get hopefully the end of this year. Um, but we are carrying money over to actually outfit and buy equipment to get those up and running. And then this, uh, the five-yard public works truck, this is actually in the current year budget, but that's on order. So we haven't received it yet. So we're just carrying that money over to the following year. But other than that, no new vehicles, uh, planned for next year. And on the equipment side, some of the major equipment, public works buying a wood shiver. And we have some riverfront park audio and camera system, police department in their community room, audio visual upgrades. And the police department's asking for a, uh, virtual reality training, uh, device. So, uh, to really help with their training.
If, if, can I ask the chief to talk about that one a little bit? The, the number seems really high, but if the chief can explain what that is, um, it's, it's a really interesting but necessary thing for the police departments today.
So with the new safety act, there's a bunch of mandates we have to go through. So officers not it's not decertified, but deactivated. Um, those are de-escalation techniques, crisis intervention, officer safety techniques, which includes cover concealment for time and use of force, um, decision-making. We have to go through those and the actual system's a hundred thirty thousand. Yeah. And we get a first in Illinois discount. We just, um, went to Aurora P D to see, because they have the system. It's amazing. Um, not only do they go through each training scenario, but it's dynamic based on the officer making the decision. Um, if they did something wrong, they do a certain strategy to get them back on tra- task or show that they did it wrong and they failed the scenario. And when they fail a scenario with a V R, nobody's getting injured. Um, and it's an initial cost of sixty-nine, sixty-nine thousand, five hundred. But for each of these mandates, and we estimate it low, it costs basically four thousand to five thousand dollars to conduct the training for all thirty-two officers. That includes overtime and ammunition. Um, so each year those range instructors will have to come up with new scenarios. This does it for you. And it's a one, one-time cost of sixty-nine thousand, five hundred. So ultimately in three years, it'll be a deduction in costs and a cost savings for the P D.
And it allows our police officers to train more regularly where they don't have to actually pull several officers because there's a minimum number of officers they have to pull to do these trainings to run the scenarios. And then you're paying for overtime and pulling them off the street to do their trainings. Whereas this, and as Joe said, we call it, without doing a lot of research on the actual lifespan of it, we're calling it, let's say, a ten-year purchase. So that's a one-time cost, but you can use it at any time for those ten years.
And for reference, so one of these training scenarios, hey, I'm going through it myself. You'll need two instructors to play role players, one instructor to actually guide individual going through and one to score. With this and with, with this system, it's one-on-one. It's one person to actually use the laptop. The officer is using the V R headset with a live-action weapon, um, that simulates your, your gun. And it's amazing. So when the instructor talks, the person in the V R is actually mimicking what the officer is saying. Um, so you're interacting like it's a real situation.
There's no cost like for the update of software year over year or anything like that?
Fee and every time there's an update. Bided for you.
So what's the shelf life you think for that?
We're gonna say minimum of ten years.
Ten years.
And this would be set up, it almost looks like an A D T alarm system. So it's gotta be a thirty-five by thirty-five room. It'd be in our community room. It'll look like centers on the wall. Um, and that's basically your role-playing scenario. The only injury, like the, uh, sergeant who went through it, he thought he was stepping over a curb. There was no curb there. So you have to kind of very careful.
Thanks, Joe.
Great. Uh, just a couple of other quick things. Um, our general fund, we are projecting a surplus of about two million dollars, uh, this year. So si- six hundred thousand dollars of it is our, our budget transfer. And then the other one point four million dollars is kind of made up of two things. First of all, uh, we're seeing about a seven hundred thousand dollars savings on the expenditure side made up of salaries or, or operating expenses. We had a lot of you know, turnover this year with retirements or, or rehiring of positions of at lower salaries, you know, when people, when people leave or positions being vacant for a period of time. So we are seeing some, some money on the savings side, plus on the revenue side, that I had mentioned, uh, building permits were four hundred thousand dollars over budget there. So we had a few, uh, revenues that, that came in over budget that is really making up why we're seeing a surplus this year. Um, with, to figure out what to do with that, we can kind of follow what we've done in the past where we turn for that money over to our capital projects fund for future projects. Uh, we could look at police pension contributions, making extra there. We could use it for property acquisition. If we wanted to go out and buy any properties, we could use some of the surplus for that. So really just kind of determining a use for, uh, what the surplus, uh, in the general fund should do. Um, and then our new public works facility, really determining what the funding source is. We have our, our referendum vote later this month. So whether or not that passes or doesn't, um, that would be a, a definite funding source for, um, for help paying the debt on that building. Um, and I, I get, I mentioned, we'd have a budget amendment if the construction cost, if, if we move forward with the building. So as Steve mentioned, uh, we're really working to finalize the budget right now. Uh, in two weeks, we'll have the, the committee as a whole to go through the budget. I hope to have, uh, a PDF of basically the proposed budget document done and, and posted to the village website for public to look at and for everyone to look at prior to that March eighteenth meeting. Um, our two April meetings will come back with any changes, any updates that we know to the budget, uh, and present those. And then finally come back on May sixth to, uh, approve the final budget. Is there any other questions or?
Nope.
Thanks. All right. Right. We need a motion to go to Zach's session to discover, land, to discuss.
Go to exec session.
Land acquisitions and sale property.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
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 Both the same. All right. Thank you.